Mayor Allen.
Present.
Mayor Protim Clayton.
Present.
Commissioner Kayler.
Present.
Commissioner Crowley.
Present.
And Commissioner Skidmore.
Present.
I would like to welcome everyone here in the audience, as well as anyone watching or listening at home. We will begin today's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the invocation by Erin Nelson with Ottawa Bible Church.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. It is the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, I just ask this evening that your hand would be on this meeting, that you would give wisdom, that you would just guide the discussion, that you would be glorified. We just thank you for your son, Jesus, in the hope that we have in him. We just thank you for each one here this evening. Just thank you for each of the officials who serve faithfully. We just ask that you bless them for their service. We just ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to public comments. Do we have any registered?
We have none registered.
Okay. We will move on past item seven. We'll start with the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the November nineteenth, twenty twenty-five meeting, and the twenty twenty-six cereal malt beverage licenses, as well as the agenda approval. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to give the commissioners a chance to declare any conflict or communication they've had that might influence their ability to consider today's issues impartially. Hearing none, we will go to unfinished business. We'll start with item ten A, review of the transient guest tax distribution framework with Director Landis.
Thank you. This is an item that we reviewed with you at the November nineteenth meeting. And just as a reminder, for anyone who wasn't watching or with us at that time, the transient guest tax is, was put in place earlier in twenty twenty-five. We've received our first distribution in August, or the collection in August, distribution in September, and began to accumulate those funds and planning ahead for the distribution of those funds for use amongst our community activities that might help in the development and marketing of Ottawa and bringing new people to our area, and for those activities and marketing of those activities in our community. So we designed this policy for your consideration and gave to you at our last meeting just some ideas on how we might be able to structure that. As a reminder, our framework goals here are to support the community attractions and events that draw our visitors to ensure that we have a broad taxpayer benefit by reducing our reliance on property tax, and then also to create a transparent and competitive and measurable allocation process. So we presented you with two parts to our allocation, one being an annual sponsorship program and one being an annual contribution to either our community partner applications or any way that might assist with reducing our property tax reliance. The first part of that allocation, we had presented to you an idea that we could maybe allocate up to twenty-five thousand dollars. Of course, we don't have to spend all of that, and you could always spend more or allocate more if you chose each year, if you had some really good applications. But this would be a way for those annual events or those one-time attractions or marketing opportunities or chances to bring visitors to our community that they could come and apply to you one time early in the year. We would accept applications beginning in January for about thirty days, bringing them back to you for consideration by March. The reason for doing that early in the year is so that those event coordinators have an opportunity to budget and plan appropriately for their events. And by the time we get to March, we really do start to see a lot of events across our community and throughout the remainder of the year. So those would be measurable dollars allocated for that current year in twenty, I'll use twenty-six as an example. So we would start that in January. The other part of this allocation process would be determining during our budget process, which is mid-year, how we would spend those dollars and allocate those dollars, what we would put those towards for upcoming budget years. So in this case, in the middle of twenty-six, when we started talking about our budget, you could determine how you wanted to do, use the remainder of those transient guest tax dollars, either to reduce your property tax reliance or to allocate towards your community partner funding applications. And then that would be valid for your twenty-seven budget. As we get into this process, there, because we just started receiving those funds, it's not like we're going to start the year with a full year's amount that would have been collected. So this approach doesn't give you a lot of opportunity in the year of twenty-six other than to get us started with some initial events, support of some initial events. And then as we move through the year, if there were some sort of, something that came to you that you absolutely wanted to support that maybe hadn't been anticipated earlier in the year, you could then still allocate a smaller dollar amount to something like that. Your hands wouldn't be tied in that situation, but you wouldn't have a full year's worth of allocation to use in twenty twenty-six right away. So with that, we talked at our last meeting that we talked, that we discussed this, that you would just bring back some ideas or some comments. We can approve the policy or we can continue our discussion, bring you back some alternate ideas, but you wanted a little bit of time to think it over.
Thank you. Do we have any thoughts or questions?
Well, thank you for presenting on that. And I think that's a great idea. Like you mentioned, the annual sponsorship's kind of the one-time impact. I know we kind of asked on limitations on that. Is that for nonprofits? Is that open to anyone? Kind of what does that look like in terms of who might apply for that? And kind of, do they need to ask for twenty-five? Can someone ask for six or five if they've got a smaller event, but would like some money? And kind of what that looks like?
I think we were considering that the total allocation would be up to twenty-five thousand, not per application necessarily, because there wouldn't be enough funds for, I would anticipate you'll get several applications. Some of those might be as small as three or five hundred dollars. Some of them might be, you know, five. I don't know. It depends on the type of activity they're bringing to you. The use, I believe, can be used for anything that you see fit to use those dollars for. I believe that's how the resolution was worded initially, to give you that opportunity to be as flexible as possible.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Melanie, for putting this together and for the, for the team that put this together. I know it wasn't just you. It was several individuals. The only thing I'm concerned about is that, because for the first year, I wonder if we want to set aside those application dates? Because I don't, I hate for somebody to hear about this March one and go like, oh geez, I should have applied for that. And so that's the only thing I would suggest is maybe we set aside those dates just for the first year and then kind of feel it out and see how things go moving forward. And I certainly don't think this will be the end of how transient guest tax will be allocated for things happening in our city, but I think it's a good start. So thank you.
If you wanted to approach your first year in a early year, later in the year format, we could probably do that as well for the first year and just know that your general guidelines would be for those years going forward, because year one probably could be as flexible as you want it to be.
I like that.
Yeah, good idea.
Any other thoughts?
Do you have specific changes that you would like to have made in order to consider the policy for approval? Or would you like to adopt a framework and then come back with some flexible availability for twenty-six? What would you like, how would you like us to proceed?
Would we like to adopt the flexible framework for the first year and then proceed with the suggested framework in subsequent years?
I think so. I think, you know, as Commissioner Kayler mentioned, I think that first year, you know, being it's first week in December, you know, I know folks are probably already having planned things for next year, so they may just not have time by February fifteenth. So maybe for this first year to kind of kick it off, you know, maybe don't have that hard end date on it. But if maybe we hit that cap, then, you know, then it's all been allocated, but after this first year, kind of move from that.
Would you like to make that motion?
I can't. One question, sorry, I was gonna ask too, along with that. When this comes in, will this be its own, we'll have its own line item showing kind of revenue and expenses coming out of a fund? Will it be a fund? How does that kind of look like on, when we get to budget season? How will this look?
Great question. So the revenue itself comes into its own line item. It is in the general fund, but it does have its own line item. So you can track all the revenue coming in, and it does have its own division within the general fund so that you can see how it's been spent. And then as we present to you those cash balances in that fund, we will designate a line that kind of shows you what that rolling balance is. Otherwise, it would kind of get lost in that general fund balance. We want to make sure you know what's available.
Thank you. That was, I think, my only concern, kind of getting lost in the mix of the general fund. But other than that, I will make the motion to approve the distribution framework for transient guest tax as stated in the agenda, with the exception of for the fiscal year twenty twenty-six, with that.
Did you mean setting aside the dates?
Oh, yeah. So without, yeah, without the date requirement framework for fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Do we have a second?
I will second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to point out that, and I think that Commissioner Clayton had it absolutely right. It says a baseline allocation of twenty-five thousand. It doesn't mean a ceiling of twenty-five thousand. So at a minimum, we're saying to citizens and those that put on community-based events, that we're saying that baseline, we are gonna give away no less than twenty-five thousand dollars to, for sponsorships for community events. But that doesn't mean there's a, there's a ceiling.
I certainly appreciate all the conversation that commissioners have had and certainly the information that's been brought to us upon TGT. But I want to see as little guidelines as possible, quite honestly. I don't want to subject any future commission to anything that we've told them they need to do. We don't know what's gonna happen in the future, and I want them to make their own decisions with that money that's available. I, I, I think it's a great thing. I think it can be spent wisely. I just don't know what somebody in ten years thinks is wisely. So that's what I'm looking forward to seeing.
And I think, I think this kind of accomplishes that in the sense that it sets the baseline of twenty-five thousand dollars, so they can go as high as they want essentially, and then also kind of a guideline as to where the money can be spent.
And I'm also talking, not just the twenty-five, I'm talking about all the money that's brought in. And I'm talking throughout the year. You mentioned it earlier that, you know, we've talked about a certain time period early on in the year, but I'm talking about what happens if something in September occurs. And whether we make a decision or a future commission makes, can make a decision. I want those funds, if they're available, to be able to be dispersed for maybe some economic development that it was brought in for. So I don't want to, I don't want to set too many, too much red tape in order for that to happen.
Are you thinking no deadlines essentially for applicants?
I think at any point, somebody should be, should, could be able to come to us and say, hey, this came up, you know, and it could be beneficial to our community, you know? And if we've set guidelines for the first three months or four months of the year, that totally rules out the last eight months of our, of the, of the year from here on out. So. And I know, I know, I know some of it has to be done before budget. I understand that, you know, in order to, you know, to disperse those, those funds, you know, that are available. But we also don't have to spend it all either. We could set aside some, or somebody could, the future commission could set aside some and say, hey, if somebody does come to us, and then it scrolls over if it doesn't.
Yes. And I know you have a motion and a second on the table, just to add to what you've said. This is just intended to be a framework. Those, those requests can come to you at any time. The idea behind it, though, is to make sure that you have the available funds to be able to make those other choices instead of maybe spending them all upfront in the, in the year and not have the opportunity to be able to spend some later for something that might come up and, and be a really good use of funds as well.
So the date guidelines in here aren't necessarily hard dates essentially.
We just wanted to give you a time of the year when people know that an application is needed to come in. And largely because as those events come up, it takes time to bring that application to you for consideration before they need the dollars to be dispersed to them to be able to spend the money ahead of their event. So trying to make sure that we had, you could review them all at the same time and competitively, and then transparently to them as to why they were either accepted or denied, just to give it some framework in support of your goals for those dollars.
I understand too. Real quick, is that some of these applications could be for like four hundred dollars? That would come to this commission for approval? I didn't know if you had a dollar limit where you could just say, people say, oh, I can decide anything less than this figure or something. I, I, I don't know what decision made, rest of you all think, but I would necessarily think we need to talk about a four hundred dollar advance.
Commissioner Skidmore, I would note, the city manager has some discretionary spending authority that's not tied to these funds. So for those small requests, it has been past practice that the city manager could say, yes, we'll participate, and then advise the commission of what has been done on some of those smaller allocations. I would just remind you all that any guideline that you make for yourselves is subject to you all setting it aside, changing it, or deciding that there's good cause for an exemption to that. So I wouldn't get too hung up on, on binding yourselves or the commission that will be taking office in a week. You will still have the opportunity to have flexibility here with these funds. If a good opportunity like a zip trip kind of thing comes up, you'll have the flexibility. These are just guidelines so that outside parties know, hey, we need to get that application in if we have a standing event that we really want some assistance for, and will kind of be a good signpost for them as to when to, to approach you for those kinds of requests.
Yes.
We have a motion and a second for it to be approved with the date exceptions for fiscal year of twenty twenty-six. May I have a roll call vote, please? How do you vote? Mayor Protim Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Kayler?
Yes.
And Commissioner Crowley?
Yes.
Mayor Allen?
And I vote yes. Motion carries.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to item eleven B, review of twenty twenty-six community partner funding agreements with City Attorney Finch.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Commissioners Blaine Finch, City Attorney. Annually, the city reviews partnership funding agreements. I talked a little about this two weeks ago. We wanted to bring this back to you tonight to kind of give you an update on the status. Recall that there are four funding agreements, Prairie Paws Animal Shelter, Elizabeth Layton Center, Ottawa Main Street Association, and Franklin County Development Council. You can see, let's see, Christmas Tree Fund. That'll be the next funding agreement that you work on right after these. But the, the status of those four agreements is, is this as of tonight. We are working with Prairie Paws Animal Shelter to look at some changes to the language in their agreement. I told you a couple of weeks ago that really that's a different type of agreement. It's a different service that's being provided. They're kind of providing part of what has traditionally been an animal control function. They also do some handling of licensure for the city for animals as well. And really, that's more of a payment-for-service kind of contract as opposed to a community funding partner donation. You're not doing that as a donor to the animal shelter. You're really doing that in exchange for the services that they provide in taking in strays and then, and making sure that animals are spayed, neutered, and, and handling licensure services. So we're working through that conversation. I anticipate that we can get that done in the next two weeks. If not, I would suggest that you just roll into next year with this funding agreement in place and, and that we get that pinned down for you as quickly as we can. The Prairie Paws folks have provided me a copy of one of the contracts they have with another city here in Kansas that has some provisions that they like. We have some changes, obviously, on your behalf that I want to propose, and then we'll, we'll try to work to a draft that we can bring back to you. Again, hopefully in two weeks, but worst-case scenario, that would roll into January, and we would just continue funding them as we have. That leaves the other three agreements. I think the agreement with Ottawa Main Street and the agreement with Elizabeth Layton Center and the FCDC agreement are all ready for your consideration and deliberation this evening. I am happy to answer any questions, and I know that there have been some questions propounded to staff about some of the services, and we're happy to answer those tonight. But I would say this issue is now ripe for your consideration as we head into the last meeting with this commission for, for the year. It will, it would be good to go ahead and deal with this unfinished business this evening. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
And we should take these one by one?
I would advise, because you're entering into a contractual relationship. The votes can be by acclamation if, if the chair decides that. You know, and you can note in the minutes that all were in favor. You don't necessarily have to do a roll call here like we do on an ordinance where we might have a requirement of three out of five or four out of five.
So with that suggestion, I think we would start with Elizabeth Layton Center and their funding agreement, which it looks like it's not in our current packet. It was in the packet from November twelfth. Do we have any concerns or questions or changes made to that funding agreement?
No, I move that we approve the Elizabeth Layton funding agreement for twenty twenty-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor say aye. All opposed? Okay. We will approve the ELC funding agreement. We'll move on to Ottawa Main Street's funding agreement. Any questions, comments?
No, I move that we approve the Ottawa Main Street Association funding agreement for twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
Are we fully funding the director? Okay. Sorry, I didn't have that in front of me. Thank you. I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
We want to have a discussion of what was that?
Forty-seven thousand.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We will next move on to FCDC. Any comments, questions? I know on that one, we have kind of directed staff to take a look at what bringing that in-house would look like. And it looks like there were some cost savings doing that. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, you had inquired of staff whether, and that current contract, by the way, is sixty-seven thousand dollars. You had inquired about whether there could be any cost savings if that were brought in-house. I think Director Landis has performed an analysis and kind of created a pro forma for what economic development might look like if it were provided by the city. I'll let her speak to that. You want to?
Thank you. So we did, we did put together an analysis, and it is roughly about half, if not just a little less than half, that we could spend by doing this in-house. That would include dollars set aside for continuing participation in those programming activities that are already in place, like day-on-the-job and some of the workforce programs that are already in place, the e-community participation, those types of programs already there, as well as a remaining membership and those types of current expenses that are already, were already part of that.
Commissioners, oftentimes when we talk about economic development these days, the world has shifted in the last thirty years, and, and when I started doing economic development, and then shifted again over the last ten to fifteen. And often, prospects come knocking at your door either through the Kansas Department of Commerce and being part of, of their programs or through Kansas City Area Development Council and their SmartPort initiative, which is about logistics and distribution across the metro area. We used to go out and prospect harvest more. There was more approaching outside companies coming in. They really, companies changed that. They started going to site selectors. They started hiring professional firms and consultants to go out and vet hundreds and hundreds of sites around the country with all kinds of factors. And when I was the Economic Development Director a decade ago, we would get, and we still do, this is, this part has not changed, we get spreadsheets called RFI, as Request for Information, and they might have thirty, forty, fifty questions in them, and what they want to know is how far are you away from a rail spur? How far is your land away from an airport? How far away from an interstate highway? What is the available workforce? You know, you'd consult your labor shed study. How many megawatts of power are available at this site? How many millions of gallons of water a day can the city treat? Those kinds of questions, and they will send those out to hundreds, if not thousands, of sites around the country. And they are looking to eliminate sites by finding, what is that thing that, you know, this one's, maybe our radius is five miles away from an airport or fifty miles away from an airport, and if you're outside of that, you're out. And so they, they do a lot of that stuff internally at the consultants. It's not really like it used to be where they might come to town and you visit, not until the very, very end of a project. And you recall that I talked to you about Kubota. We had a site visit with those folks. We got clear to the point where there was a site visit with folks coming in. And, and that can happen, but it is not direct contact until such time as the prospect wants that direct contact. And, and then really, it switches to an internal conversation with the city, with staff about incentive packages. As you know, and we've talked through this, you've approved the city's incentive policy. There's constitutional real property abatements that can be applied to industrial businesses and warehousing businesses. There are industrial revenue bonds. There are TIF districts and CID districts. Now there's the reinvestment housing district if it's a housing-type project. But really, the bulk of the conversation, once a site has been narrowed down and they're, they're really pitting one against another or, or maybe they've got four or five finalists, it's about the incentive packages. And that's really not something that's done outside. That's all internal. That's staff conversations with the finance director, bond counsel, our, our city financial planner and financial consultants. And so those things really, in today's world, economic development is done in-house. It's not, it's not something that, that is outsourced, and you're seeing a lot more cities go to that system because that's really the tale of the tape. At the end of the day, is what are the incentives that are on the table that, that make a company look at going one place or another? So that's kind of some context to the, the conversation about bringing it in-house and why there is kind of a cost savings to doing that.
When we talk about bringing it in-house, how many staff members' jobs are we gonna affect? Meaning how many more, how much? How many people are gonna have more workload now because we're bringing it into in-house?
Really not many. The one thing that we would do is we would have someone, we already, so here's how it works now. We get contacted sometimes through FCDC, sometimes by Department of Commerce directly, sometimes by KCADC reps directly. And they, they send over the RFI, and that's immediately parted out to Director Sneethan to talk about, you know, utility questions. New Director Harkins, who you're gonna meet here in a little bit, would talk about zoning issues and whether there's any overlay districts or that sort of thing. Director Landis would say, here's our finance or our incentive package from finance. And really, the city manager usually quarterbacks that or assigns a department head to do that. That won't change. The, the only thing that will change is that the RFI's will all come directly from Department of Commerce or from KCADC in this case. And we'll still occasionally get, from the recruitment side, we'll occasionally get inquiries from third parties. And we had one come in just today on a piece of property from someone who owns property in Ottawa and says, hey, I think I've got someone who wants to develop this property. Tell me what incentives there are. And that request came through an elected official and then came to me, came to the finance director, and we're working on, on that response now. So that's kind of what we do now, really. So to answer your question bluntly, I don't think it'll be a lot more work for anybody who's here because that's kind of the way we do it. We'll have more time, I think, in assembling those RFI's, which is functionally an administrative task. Once we know which sites that we're marketing and putting in, that's really pretty simple. And we do already compile most of that data. When Wendy Lee was here and, and was the planning director, Wendy did a lot of those things. She filled them out. So.
The reason, the reason I ask is the city of Ottawa has great staff. I think every one of you guys do a great job, and you, you have no problems wearing all sorts of hats. You know, we call you, you know, community development director or, you know, finance director, but you all wear, you know, a lot of different hats. And I, I don't want to, I don't want to keep compounding people's jobs. And then maybe when we have to fill a position, which hopefully we never have to and y'all stay forever, but when we have to fill that position and somebody says, hold on, what's my job description? What do I have to do? Well, I've done all of that somewhere else, but not this and this. And that's only because the folks that we have now are willing to take on those tasks, but the next people may not be able to or want to.
Definitely, and I'll speak maybe on behalf of staff, and some of them are here and can speak for themselves. I think they're all happy to do it because they are, they've, they've taken these jobs because they are committed to serving the citizens of this community. And that often means long hours. That often means doing things that are not technically in the job description to, to get the job done. But I will tell you that when it comes to whether it's a recruitment of an industry looking at Ottawa or retention of an existing industry or trying to solve a problem for them, it always ends up on somebody's desk at City Hall. That's just how it is. There is no outside organization that can solve their problem when it comes to, hey, I've got a question about power supply. I've got a question about what are your standards for water treatment? I've got a question about industrial revenue bonds. We're answering all those questions anyway. Melanie?
I might just add that we had, even before we started this discussion, had been reaching out to some of our local education institutions to see if we could find someone that might be able to come in in more of like an intern-type role to assist us with some of the analytical stuff that we just haven't been able to get to, that we know is gonna help develop some of these programs that we've been talking about that could assist with certain areas of the community and, and putting. that we've been talking about that could assist with certain areas of the community and, and putting together some of those documents that are needed for being able to represent even our incentives better to those that are coming to and asking. So even a little bit of that administrative support could come through a role like an internship and then be used to help support some of the things that we have going on. Some of those inquiries that come in are confidential. And so the more people that are involved, it, it makes it difficult. And so we try to keep those in a tight knit group until they're ready to announce that they're doing something in our community. So, I think it's, it's a balancing act with each one and each one's a little different.
And you didn't ask this, but I think it's implied in the question is, you know, would the level of service change if you all made the decision to bring this part of what we do in-house? And I can tell you that I don't think it would. And, and that's no slight to FCDC or OFCED or OID was what it was when it started. It, it's just that the process has changed and so much of it ends up back inside City Hall and, and those questions being answered here. That's not gonna change. And I, I don't think functionally you're gonna see a difference. And those activities that FCDC is doing well, that the city is not taking the lead on, things like Day on the Job or the Career Fair. You know, the, when we did the pro forma, when staff looked at that, we built support into that. We would continue or urge you to continue to support FCDC with those kinds of sponsorships for those events that the city does not do. We participate and we sponsor and we think they're great events, but they're, they're not ones that logically fit under the city's Aegis. And so when FCDC does those things or any outside group, and like you just talked about with the prior agenda item, and we can be supportive of that, you know, we've built some of that into this pro forma as well.
Well, I'll say, I'm, I'm a little concerned about cutting them out. I think there's a lot of things, we don't know what we don't know. Going forward, programs, things that FCDC will do throughout the year that, oh, we didn't know they did this or that. I'm a little concerned about that. That's why I wonder, I think I would prefer a three or six month extension to see what we can do and work with them. Also, we'll be having a new city manager seated here in the next first quarter, hopefully of next year. And I'd like for he or she to be able to come in and have some input on this decision that we're impacting our, our city for. So, I'd be more inclined to go with three or six month extension. We did this once with Ottawa Main Street and it seemed to work out pretty well. That'd be my proposal.
City Attorney Finch, on one question on kind of like logistics of if it does kind of move in-house. Would folks, you know, right now, maybe it's, do they reach out to you, City Manager, Director Landis, Director Sneethan, Director Welsh? Or would this be, you know, a landing page on the new website, a dedicated phone number, or a, you know, distribution list? Something that they would email that kind of serves as that conduit for any of these types of inquiries? Instead of being like, well, this question, do I need to reach out to who? Is it like kind of a one central repository? Or how would you kind of see that looking if, if it does kind of move in-house?
If the commission makes that decision, obviously we'll work together with both the current and future city managers, Finance Director and, and Planning Staff to, to put together the right answer to that. I will tell you that both KCADC and the Department of Commerce will want a point of contact. Whether that's going to be in the city manager's office or gonna be in finance or going to be in planning, that, that will be answered as part of that process. And yes, there will be a person who will have the frontline responsibility. These RFI's, when they come in, they often want them back in forty-eight to seventy-two hours. They're, they're a very quick turnaround. But they're also built with a, a base, a, a database of knowledge and, and information that we've already compiled here at the city. So, it's not hard to do, but we do want to have that one point of contact. Now, best laid plans, the reality is that prospects will come in from all different kinds of directions. You know, maybe it's somebody that one of you went to high school with and, and you'll get a call from them. It may be, you know, somebody was driving through town and says, oh, I'd like to put a business here. Or it may be an existing business who says, hey, I'd like to expand here, you know, and their first point of contact will probably not be on the website. They'll call somebody that they know here at the city and have that conversation. If you do bring this in-house, one of the things that I would suggest we do is engage Misty and the Communications Department to kind of send a one-stop-shop card out to all of our existing businesses, employers over a certain size. That says, here's, here's your cheat sheet. Here's who you call when you have a question at City Hall. So, we're helping and delivering good service to those folks. And then as far as the folks reaching out to us, the bulk of those will come through KCADC or Department of Commerce and they will have a, a point of contact assigned.
I know one, sorry, I know one thing that I was thinking about as you were talking and, and speaking about our cost savings. I flash back to the property tax meeting when we were sitting here and citizens were frustrated with the property tax levels, their valuations and things. And we have an opportunity to save a quarter of a mil essentially here. By bringing it in-house, by not cutting any services. And also not cutting to, to Commissioner Skidmore's point, we're, we're not, we're not defunding FCDC. If we were to move on, they still have two-thirds of their funding essentially, since it's a third, a third, a third. So, I, I don't see it as that. I see it as bringing it in-house for cost savings. So, just my opinion up there.
I, I think too, Mayor Allen, I think you want to point out too, is that we're not saying we don't want to be members of FCDC. We're just saying that the funding amount that we are, that we are allocating right now, we just think can be better used. And that's really what my responsibility is as a commissioner. And I think everybody up here, our responsibility is to use the monies that are brought into us to the best of our ability. So, I'm not saying, you know, we're not saying we don't want to be members of FCDC, just not to the level we are right now. So.
Just one other concern I've had that the director's been known around the state, a lot of contacts, a lot of people know him. Might those people be contacting FCDC directly and not, and bypass City Hall? And then, then what? So, I'm, I'm kind of concerned about that scenario. Could that be a possibility?
So, any land that's within the city that would be developed in the city, as part of the pro forma includes joining KCADC and, and, and part of Team Kansas, they, they will contact the jurisdiction where the land is located. They will contact our contact person. And, and I firmly believe that if, if Mr. Bean were to get a call from someone wanting to locate in or, or around Ottawa, we're talking about a scenario where Ottawa would still be a member of the organization. I assume that, that that call would be, you know, passed on to the appropriate folks here at the city to, to help answer those inquiries.
Do we have the ability to even fund for three months? Is there anything that negates that? Do we have the ability to fund at a lesser amount?
Certainly, Commissioners, you can, you can amend the agreement or, or propose a change to the agreement for less money. The question would be just one of, if you want us to bring it in-house, as, as you've asked staff, if, if you want us to execute what's on the pro forma, it, it would be, do you want us to do that over ninety days, I guess would be the question? Or do you, or you don't want to duplicate and pay for the same service in two places? That, that would be the only question. But yes, absolutely. You have the ability to reduce the total amount, to reduce the duration, to take it to zero, to take it to two hundred percent. All of those options are yours.
I think we have a, kind of a unique opportunity with, not to say an opportunity with turnover, but with now having a new director of our Community Development Department and then soon to have a new city manager. I think, I think it's the right time. Like, I think it's a good time to bring it in-house if that was the case. Just and, and start the year off kind of fresh.
But before making a decision, why can't we just offer Paul Bean and FCDC a, a contractual agreement for thirty-six thousand dollars? Half of what we offer them now. And see if they'll accept it. Then nothing changes except for the funding and we're getting exactly what we're, the only thing that anybody's mentioned is the fact that we're, we're saving a little bit of money. If they accept it, okay, great. If they don't, then we, then we, then we have the option to bring it in-house.
What, I, my question would just be, what value do we get out of that thirty-six thousand?
The same value would be getting, paying the city thirty-six thousand. No, 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 no. I'm saying it's, we're not bringing it in-house. I'm saying we're offering it to FCDC for thirty-six thousand. And if they accept it, great. If they don't, then we, then we bring it in-house and that's where the thirty-six thousand dollars goes.
What I'm saying is how City Attorney Finch mentioned, everything ends up on the city's desk. So, no matter what, we're still working on it.
I, I don't think that we don't get nothing. I, I don't think we get nothing from FCDC. I don't.
Again, but we're not saying we don't want to be members.
But there's a difference. There's a difference between being a member and what we, what we are, what I think we are getting. And maybe I'm a hundred percent wrong here, what I think we are getting from FCDC. And, and maybe I'm wrong. Maybe I, yeah, maybe I'm wrong. But you're right, there's, 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 I guess maybe I'd have to get, have somebody explain to me what the membership is and then also being a funding partner. You know, what, what's the difference between what we get? And you're right, if there's no difference, then I, let's save seventy thousand dollars and pay them two grand to be a member at that point. If there's no difference, but I believe there is a difference.
And, and to that point a little bit, in that kind of funding, you know, you had mentioned with Prairie Paws that they provide a service to the city and essentially get compensated kind of for that. Currently, FCDC is kind of in that role. Would you say, right, that they're providing, you know, Main, you know, Main Street and some of these other ones and ELC are a little bit different in terms of contangibles that we get back? Or at least now with FCDC, we are, we're getting some tangibles in terms of these RFI's and different things coming in. Which would potentially look to maybe, like you said, mentioned to Commissioner Crowley's kind of point, is there something that's not ripping a Band-Aid off completely? You know, Commissioner Skidmore, sorry, right for a minute for a second. I mentioned, you know, maybe a couple of months or something like that to kind of ease that almost as a like maybe a severance. And what that might look like, just because if we choose to do this, bring this in-house, I don't want, you know, just that decision to completely, like, we mentioned it's a potential third. What that effect would be. I think in the organization that we partner with, I want to think about, we have to think about citizens first, but then also that organization. And if we just cut it completely, what does that look like versus, is there an option to negotiate something for a couple of months? You know, is there a sixty-day, a ninety-day? And what that, what would that negotiation kind of even look like if we wanted to go that route? Or how would that look? You know, kind of for next year.
I think what, what counsel said is it's, it's our decision. If we want to send them something that says we're only gonna, we're only gonna enter a contract for you, with you for three months, that's what we do. If they accept it, great. If they don't, then we don't. If we want to say, like I said, we're giving you thirty-six instead of seventy-two, and if they want to accept it, they do. They don't, they don't. So.
So, I, I was, I was on the commission when we changed from OFCED to FCDC. And I know that we've got a, a decision in front of us tonight that we changed from FCDC to bringing it in-house. I do think we need to remember that change is not necessarily bad. And it was, it was not easy. And I, City Attorney Finch obviously was here too, when we, when we changed from OFCED to FCDC. That was not an easy decision. But it turned out to be a good decision. It's just, I really see this as moving with technology too. Technology has changed tremendously since two thousand twelve, I think is when we, twelve, thirteen is when we, we changed over. And I could be completely wrong in those years, but it's around then. And I think we're moving with technology and just saying like, technology just looks different now. And I, I'm in favor of us being accountable for taxpayer dollars and saying, if we can do what needs to be done or what should be done on behalf of the city and save just a little bit, let's let technology be our friend and, and do that. And I mean, City Attorney Finch did bring this up too and, and don't want it to be lost. I mean, I've sat on the League of Kansas Municipalities for, for several years. And we are not the only city doing this. There are many cities that have moved to this format. So, we're not re, we're not reinventing the wheel here. Lots of cities have done this exact format when they're moving. I'm been successful at it.
Any other questions? How would we like to proceed?
Well, Madam Mayor, I'm gonna make the motion that we do approve the contract for three months with a review at that point for possibly another three, but to be amortized on the amount that we put in on the budget for twenty twenty-six.
Commissioner Skidmore on that motion and City Attorney Finch, you can answer. In that contract, I guess, what is, you know, in legal vernacular, kind of spelled out about their duties? What would that look like? Would that be, they would stay the contact for KCADC? Would, would that move still work? Or what would that kind of look like? Would it be? If we were to do Commissioner Skidmore's motion, I guess.
You, you'd have to ask the maker of the motion what his intention is.
Well, I would just say we continue on like we had before. Nothing changed. We'll just continue to pay them for monthly like we have been previous years. Amortized over the amount we budgeted for them for twenty twenty-six for three months. And then at the end of that three months, reevaluate one more time. Maybe up to the end of it, maybe we'll go ahead and continue with the rest of the nine months of the year. But my thought is just go ahead and do it gradually, like we did, we did with Main Street, similar approach we had with them a couple of years ago. Was that three months or six months? I don't remember if that was.
I pulled the agreement. I don't know how we need to move regarding procedure, but I did pull the agreement. And we actually have an agreement. It's for the entire calendar year. So, we would have to rewrite the agreement. Or at least from my point of view. And City Attorney Finch, you could certainly, but I, I have it that it's a calendar year.
There, there are certain responsibilities in the contract that are annual in nature. Conduct an annual planning session with the city and county. I, I don't know if that's been done. Conduct an annual financial review or audit submitted every three years. Those, those are the things that are annual, provide detailed annual budget. Some of them, you know, are not. Some of them are, are month-to-month or day-to-day kind of activities. If, if I were, and I'm not rewriting your motion, Commissioner, I, I, if I'm trying to understand what you would say is that you would renew the agreement at the current rate with all of the current terms for ninety days, beginning January one and, and then reassess at the end of that period. Is that a fair recitation of your intent?
That's correct.
Okay. And I might just have you inquire of Director Landis how we actually pay our funding partners. Do we pay monthly? Do we pay biannually?
Yes, for this contract, it's monthly.
That's what I was thinking. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion on the table. Is there a second? Do we have a second? Final call for a second? Okay, that motion dies. Any other motions on how to proceed with this?
Commissioner, the only reason I'm not willing to make a second is I'm not willing to kick the can, keep kicking the can down the thing. So, as I mentioned earlier, I would be willing to suggest funding at half. And if they accept it, they do. If they don't, then we move forward in-house. But I'm not make, I'm just, Commissioners, that's, that's kind of what I'm throwing out there. If, if, if that's, sounds great, at least that kind of, it's not kicking the can. It's ripping the Band-Aid off either way.
Does the funding have of what we?
Of what we fund now.
So essentially thirty-three thousand five hundred.
There you go.
Okay.
And if they accept it, okay, then we're, we're, we're at the same number that we've talked about bringing it in-house. So, we've now saved that quarter mil like you talked about earlier. We're, we're, we're being fiscally responsible and we're, we're moving forward that way. If, if they don't accept it, because that's just not fair to them, then we, we understand that. There's no, no harm, no foul. And we move forward with, with in-house.
So, the motion?
Oh, sorry. I'll make a motion that we fund at half of what we fund now if accepted by FCDC.
Is there a second?
That's for the full year, we're talking, right? Monthly amortization, okay.
With the same, same verbiage, same language?
Same contract, half price.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I think a point I'm really struggling with, you know, in all of this as well, and I think this motion gets us in a spot that feels a little better. Like you said, we're kind of hitting both those goals. We're hitting that finance expense kind of coming down a little bit. You know, kind of for, as, as they've mentioned, the amount of work that staff does. You know, we're, we're still paying half, so we would have a potential to have half stay here with staff. I was kind of looking through last monthly report that was through October and not for nothing, I was just trying to look at like, what would service loss potentially be? Are there line items that we would really be hitting in terms of like services provided? Thinking about other community partners who provide actual active services, what that might hit if we do pull that. I would feel more comfortable in that bringing it down to that, this motion range, um, and extending that out if they do decide to do that. Without affecting either our staff's ability to meet those needs or theirs as well. And so in that motion, and City Attorney Finch, you can kind of answer this. You know, if, if this motion passes, we, I'm assuming tomorrow or in the next days, we send notice to them. They have a few time to answer, what does it look like if they say yes, what does it look like if they say no, how does that?
So, yeah, Commissioner, this, this agreement is different than the other agreements that you have as well, you do have a provision in this agreement that you and the county are funding equally. At, at the sixty-seven thousand, the county and city agree to pay sixty-seven, five ninety-four per entity annually in equal monthly installments. And then the surplus goes into FCDC's, uh, reserves, which they have sizable reserves at this point, so it would, it is not just, should you choose to propose a contract to them at a lesser amount, I'm guessing the very next question will be from the county. Well, you know, they are a party, the county is a party to this funding agreement in a way that they are not to any of your other, they don't fund Ottawa Main Street, they don't fund Prairie Paws, they don't fund Elizabeth Lake, they fund Leighton with money, but it's a different, it's a statutory obligation, not contractual. So, I can see that creating tension in, in that, is the city going to pay half and the county is going to continue at the sixty-seven number, or will they also drop the contribution? So, when you asked me about notification, it would be to both entities that, that the commission has decided to cut the funding uh, to the thirty-three-five level, um, and, and that's the agreement that the city is willing to sign.
Okay, so, so in this being different, you said like, we are in a contractual agreement with essentially both.
For this calendar year, that it, it ends in
Yeah.
Yeah. Twenty-eight days.
Okay. So would, I guess, kind of to clarify your motion, would your motion keep, would we keep the same verbiage, we'd probably need legal, I would assume that throws a wrinkle if we would need to look at
You'll have to approve an agreement at some point, I, I don't have one for you with this tonight. And then as Commissioner Crowley has pointed out, you have to come back. I, I would note, there's another factor to consider, you're talking about reducing funding in half and then asking an entity to provide the same service they've been providing. And I'm guessing your concern, someone asked earlier, well, how do we know if someone calls this group that we're gonna get, the phone calls pass through, how do we know that we're gonna get the same level of service, and I'm guessing, as you all might imagine, who have been, worked and had contracts before, how you might receive, here's the offer, we're going to pay you half and have you, expect you to continue to do the same work. I would worry about the ongoing relationship a little bit with this proposal.
And Mike, my point is just, um, how you, I know I've said it before, but how you mentioned it earlier, no matter what, it still ends up at City Hall's desk, like, it still ends up here, we're still doing the work, no matter what.
And the difference with this proposal is we would not go out and expend the funds to have direct membership with Department of Commerce and KCADC. All of those contacts would still continue to come to us through the organization that you just offered half the money to, of what they got last year.
So we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? I'm gonna do, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, just kind of thinking, thinking through this as well, that I, as we get to a vote, I definitely would have concerns funding for fifty percent, asking the same level of service.
Did we get less from Main Street Association?
I don't think they had a director at that time.
When we did, when we did have a director and we funded it half, did we get less, did we ask the same, we certainly did, and you approved it to us and we raised it back up.
Did you have any other questions?
Um, I just, I think for me, I would lean more towards kind of initially, you know, you had mentioned, you know, a three-month potential. We'll call it a severance, I don't know a better way to term, you know, what that would potentially look like if we did bring it in-house. I do think it's fair to give them the, the offer, let them, you know, let them decide what they want to do. City Attorney Finch, in the agreement, obviously you'd have a lot of drawing up to do. Were we to not believe they were providing the same level of service, what recourse, what recourse would we have in July, in March, or what would that look like within that calendar year?
If you enter into an agreement for the year, it would, you would have to terminate the agreement. It, this current agreement has a provision that says you have to give them sixty days notice, you have to give them a list of the things they're not doing, and then they have thirty days to respond. That would be, I assume if you want the same terms, that would be the provision for termination going forward. If there are services that you are receiving that you are happy with, it would be helpful for staff to know what those are, so that we can make sure we delineate them in the contract. We want to make sure that if we're offering less money, we, you have essential services that you are happy with right now with FCDC, please let us know so we can make sure we spell those out, I do want to get those explicitly in the contract.
I mean, at, for discussion point, I think I would bring up that I think contact with existing industry, you know, our North Industrial Park, other businesses, stuff would be something I would definitely want to see continue in this current agreement, in any vernacular, if, if this motion does pass, what that would, would look like um, in terms of those types of things as well.
So we have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? Can we have roll call vote, please?
How do you vote, Commissioner Crowley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Clayton?
No.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Kayler?
No.
And Mayor Allen?
And I vote no, motion fails. Do we have any other motions on this item?
I think I would like to bring up what Commissioner Crowley had previously brought up. Bringing it in-house, keeping that change unchanged. But is, is it offering, is it giving, whatever that looks like? That three months of a transitionary fund, I feel like, to anyone we come to, essentially pulling money out of an organization or we're not putting money into an organization that they likely had planned on. And I feel like giving three months, I feel like I personally could defend that to our tax base, as well as to FCDC that in the end, it might be is a consolation prize, but could hopefully help in that transition period get them through.
I guess I have some, some concerns about doing that. Um, in two thousand twenty-two, we modified the agreement that, um, initially had said that, uh, it was, I believe it was called the project fund, would no longer be exist, would no longer exist, which meant that, I think it was ten percent, tell me if I'm wrong, is it, was it ten percent of of the monies that were allocated to FCDC had to go into a special, almost like war chest, and that went away. And so, we've been giving extra money, and we've not seen, and for two years. Um, so that's twelve thousand dollars, there you go, there's your three months. Um, so, I mean, and that went away in two thousand twenty-two. Um, so, and, and actually, if you look at their, at their lineup, if you look at their budget now, they do have a tremendous amount of extra funds that are sitting in there that are not allocated. I just, I, I have heartache about just saying like, sorry, we're gonna go ahead and just give you a little something, here you go. No, we're saying, hey, you know what, this is, this is the economics of how it works. Economic development works differently now than it worked when OFCED was, existed, when we created FCDC. Economics, it's, the economics of it says, it looks different now. And we can bring it in-house and we can, um, realize some savings for the average taxpayer, but still get the same amount of service, I'm just unwilling to say that, giving three months just because.
Well, I know I'm not willing to do that either, and we've already discussed three months, we've already talked about a lesser amount at this point, I think we're down to one other option, and I'm not willing to discuss any kind of severance or consolation prize or anything like that.
Without any further motions, we will move on to Prairie Paws.
We don't want to make
I don't think there's a motion required for renewing, is there?
You guys.
The contract will expire at the end of the year. At this point, is there consensus that you want staff to begin working towards the pro forma to bring economic development operations in-house?
Would you like an official motion on that?
Be fine if you want to.
I move that we, uh, we move the economic development division, economic development monies that have been allocated in the budget, um, to in-house, to address economic development in-house here at City Hall.
Do we have a second?
Uh, with that motion, Director Landis, could you kind of spell out kind of quickly what that would look like, like that money that, you know, we had kind of to the community partner fund, if that comes back in, is that broke up, you know, between community development, you know, finance, what does that kind of look like in terms of how that money is handled?
So currently it's funded from four different funds, everything that you allocate from the community, um, services fund, so it's a, it's twenty-five percent from the general fund, twenty-five percent from each of your major utility funds. And so, we would just transfer less, we would probably move some of that funding over to a particular line item or division to be able to continue funding these activities that are related directly to economic development, that could be placed in the economic development fund itself or in a more operational fund like the general fund, but that would include line items like your memberships to KCADC, um, Team Kansas, KEDA membership, um, as well as FCDC as a membership, if you so choose. And then we would want to allocate some budget towards things like marketing and, um, those, those things that need to happen as part of performing it in a little bit different capacity than we are currently. And, um, then also maybe allocating those same dollars for some of that program support that we talked about, the day on the job and, and, um, the workforce programs, the e-community and, and some of that miscellaneous programming. And the pro forma that I created, I took those numbers directly from the FCDC, FCDC budget, just as an example, because I didn't have anything else to go off of, so, um, but that's just in general what that would look like um, for a, a budget for that function or activity. Um, I didn't allocate any costs specifically for staffing, just because we had talked about using our existing um, upper level executive level director positions to, um, work through that process.
Thank you.
We have a motion on the table, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any further discussion? May I have roll call vote, please?
How do you vote, Commissioner Kayler?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowley?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
No.
And Mayor Allen?
And although, yes, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on, oh, sorry, and we still have Prairie Paws, so, but we're delaying that because we're getting new language, so, you're off easy tonight.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item eleven A.
Distribution of donation to Mayor's Christmas Tree Fund.
A generous donation of two thousand dollars was received from, uh, Costantino's Price Chopper as a pass-through donation to assist those in need in Ottawa, and I will be presenting on this item, as City Manager Salkout is, uh, not here tonight. So as you can see on the screen, uh, we've had the, uh, this donation amount for a few years and most recently it's been dispersed to ECAN and Hope House evenly. We have two thousand dollars again this year, and we just need to determine how it will be dispersed.
You know, and this thing, I was looking at this too, and, um, and we already planned to give Hope House ninety-five hundred dollars, calendar year twenty-six. Uh, Mayor Landis, would that be also dispersed on a monthly basis as planned?
I believe that is on, that would be on a monthly basis.
Okay, I like that, so, I'd make a motion, we approve this for all for ECAN this time, and we'll be donating ninety-five hundred next year to Hope House as it sits.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Um, let's see here, any further discussion on this? May I have roll call vote, please?
How do you vote, Commissioner Kayler?
I want to say, yes, thank you, Price Chopper. I mean, that's what we need to be saying, yes, thank you, Price Chopper.
Commissioner Crowley?
Yes, thank you, Price Chopper.
Mayor Pro Tim Clayton?
Yes. Thank you, thank you to Price Chopper.
Make sure that's in the, uh,
Price Chopper, thank you, yes.
And Mayor Allen?
And I also say thank you to Price Chopper, and yes, motion carries. Next, we'll move on to item eleven B. Resolution supporting waiver of statutory requirement to use generally accepted accounting principles, GAAP-based accounting for twenty-twenty-six financial reporting. Okay, we're preparing non-GAAP finance, financial reporting, which allows the citizen to better understand the city's financial position from a budgetary and cash basis reporting perspective. Continuing the city's current basis of reporting will ensure the continuity of financial reporting, we have Assistant Director McCurdy here to present.
Good evening. So I am here to ask you to consider approval of this resolution that authorizes us to request from the Director of Accounts and Reports to waive our statutory requirement to use GAAP-based accounting, which is general accounting, uh, accepted accounting principles, sorry, forgot, or forgotten A there, um, for the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. For those listening at home who are not nerdy accounting buffs like myself, this is a annual resolution we bring before the commission, but it does not mean that it's not important. So, there is a Kansas State statute, KSA seventy-five dash eleven twenty A, and it sets, um, fiscal procedures related to accounting for all municipalities. Um, so unless all, um, unless certain criteria are met, municipalities have to adhere to GAAP. And, but, uh, like many other cities, the City of Ottawa has historically opted to opt out of this. Um, instead, we adhere to what we call K-MAG, which is Kansas Municipal Audit and Accounting Guidelines. Um, you can read, there's a whole book about it, you know, if you have some free time. It's very light reading. Um, so, by preparing these non-GAAP, um, reports though, it does make the average citizen easier and better to understand our financial position, especially related to budget and cash basis, which is what we use for reporting. Um, this is how we've been doing reporting for a long time, so it also allows us to do historical trends um, for better perspective and other analytical reporting measures. Some financial considerations, failure to waive GAAP means that we then have to adhere to GAAP, which would significantly increase our annual audit expense and, um, and and we'd have to incur some consulting costs to get us to reporting via GAAP. And then also, by waiving, we can continue our current, um, reporting style. The City Attorney Finch has reviewed and found the proposed resolution to form. Um, this does align with our strategic pillar of stewardess, stewardship of resources by continuing using those reporting metrics we already use and, uh, making our reports easy to understand for all of our stakeholders. And so, my recommendation, recommendation to you this evening is to approve the resolution as presented. Or, we can refer this to another meeting if you want to continue deliberating. And I stand for questions.
Any questions?
Oh, Madam Mayor.
Commissioner.
I think this is, this is, this is the, yeah, the fourteenth time that we've gone through this, and I gotta tell you, this is the only time once a year that I think about GAAP-based accounting. Um, and I'm not reading the book, but I am making the motion that we would, um, support the waiver, uh, that to you, to, to generally, to use GAAP-based accounting, however we're supposed to do it.
Wave out of it.
Wave out of it, yep, that's what I want to do, yep, and I'm still not gonna read the book, there you go.
That's fine.
And you can put that as part of the motion, none of us have to read the book.
Remember nerds unite, I, I second that motion.
Any further discussion? May I have roll call vote, please?
How do you vote, Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Kayler?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowley?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Clayton?
Yes.
Mayor Allen?
And I vote yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to item eleven C. Resolution accepting the final plat, Woodbridge Estates located at one oh oh one East Wilson Street. The application is for a final plat to allow for thirteen residential lots on the parcel, and we have Planning Assistant heard.
I find it very unfair that I had to go after Rebecca because she had a lot of jokes and I am pretty dull, so.
She talked about GAAP-based.
I know, and that's pretty funny stuff. I know, and that's pretty funny stuff. Um tonight I bring to you, sorry, good evening, Madam Mayor, Commission, thank you. Um I bring to you the final plat for Woodridge Estates. Um this is located at one zero zero one East Wilson. Oh, I went the wrong way, nope. No, went the wrong way again, okay, here we go. Oh goodness, maybe I do have jokes, see? Okay, so staff recommends that City Commission adopt the resolution approving the final plat and accepting the dedication of all easements and rights of way within Woodridge Estates. Thereby authorizing the mayor and city clerk to sign and record the plat um within Franklin County Register of Deeds. A little background on this plat, that's again located at one zero zero one East Wilson Street. There will be thirteen single-family residential lots. There, um this lot is three point eight two acres. The Planning Commission approved this, the preliminary plat on August twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-five. The Planning Commission unanimously passed the recommendation for the City Commission's approval of the final plat November twelfth of this year. This action fulfilled all recommend requirements under the subdivision regs regulations for forwarding the final plat to the City Commission for leg- legislation legislative approval, sorry about that. Um analysis, um the final plat does conform to the requirements of the City of Ottawa's subdivision regulations. Tract A um will be designated as non-buildable. This is for the stormwater management and drainage. We did give a variance on the minimum area on the lots. Um so he could have buildable lots of those thirteen lots. And then the developer developer will pay the parkland fee in lieu of dedication of park land on his subdivision.
Ashley, what's that variance?
Um I apologize, I did not add it up.
Was it ten percent or less?
It was.
Is that what you have the ability to?
Correct, yes.
So roughly seven hundred square feet or less?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so financial considerations. Basically, um with this, the application fees cover the costs for um the filing of the plat, um the recording of that plat. Uh the developer will install the public infrastructure and pay those park fees. Um legal consideration, City Attorney Finch has reviewed and approved the resolution to form. Recommendation, um we recommend staff, city staff recommends that you approve this final plat to be signed and adopted and be filed with the Register of Deeds office. Or we can go out and deliberate at a different, another meeting later. And I stand for any questions.
Okay, do we have any questions?
Thank you uh for presenting on that. Do you know, just kind of looking, um tract A. For lack of a better term, feels really big and it's twenty-three percent of the land for stormwater detention. And I live in a neighborhood that there's no stormwater detention and I think a lot of the houses and things see the implications of some divi- development in the sixties and seventies that didn't have that. I'm just kind of curious on, within that, you may not know the exact calculations on how that's figured, but it feels to me like that's a large, I mean, that's almost twenty-five percent of the parcel just for stormwater detention, which is hard, do you know, is that typically standard? Is there a standard size that that needs to be or is that all within engineering?
No. I can get back to you with that, I know some of that was determined by the developer and some was determined by our city engineer as well. So I I apologize about that, I don't know exactly the answer to that.
That's, that's fine, I was just thinking, I know we had to, you know, amend it for lot size. And because I think partially because there's such a large detention pond. I'm fully in favor of this, I've, you know, growing up on our side, I walked with my mom on Wilson, I think every single day in this. There was a house there one time and then it's been gone for twenty-plus years and I think this will be fantastic, but um just curious kind of in subdivision recs, what that looks like for stormwater detention, kind of has that, because you know, is it everything over three acres has to have stormwater detention? Is that correct if it's three acres, just subdivision recs, do you know? If it's replotted?
I don't know right offhand.
I could be, I could be completely wrong on this, but I think there are several options that are given regarding stormwater detention. It's not just the only option that is, yeah, it's just, this may be the least expensive option. So, and I was just looking to see when we had passed stormwater detention, I knew you're all going to miss me when I'm gone because I can look up stuff.
And I can look all that, that was more just anecdotal questions that I had, kind of like looking at this lot that what we have on that, other than that, I mean, I will make the motion to approve item eleven C on the agenda.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
I did want, oh, go ahead. All right, I just want to say congratulations Director Harkins, your first week on the job and you got thirteen home subdivision approved, so thank you for your. I can't wait to see what you're going to do next week.
No pressure.
Uh Madam Mayor, for transparency purposes, um on item eleven C and D, um I have done work for Mr. Ogilvy before and Legacy Homes. I'm under no contractual agreement on this project, so I still feel comfortable voting on these two items.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? May I have roll call vote please?
How do you vote Mayor Pro Tim Clayton?
Yes.
Commissioner Skidmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Kayler?
Yes.
Commissioner Crowley?
Yes.
And Mayor Allen?
And I vote yes, motion carries.
Thank you. Uh we'll move on to item eleven D.
Resolution determining consideration of establishing a reinvestment housing incentive district RHID, setting a public hearing and adopting a development plan for Woodridge Estates reinvestment housing incentive district.
The governing body will consider a resolution considering the establishing of the Woodridge Estates RHID district within the established boundaries, sets the date of Wednesday, January seventh, twenty-twenty-six at four P M. For a public hearing and capes the intent to adopt the proposed development plan, and we have Assistant Finance Director McCurdy here.
Yes, hello again. Um I will say there was a small typo in the agenda because you said the, set the date for Wednesday, uh January seventh, twenty-twenty-six at four P M, but that meeting will actually be at seven P M.
Okay.
Um so we have it correct in the resolution, but I just wanted to.
Thank you.
I found that today, um so, yes. Okay, so we are here to consider a resolution determining um consideration for establishing a reinhow- uh reinvestment housing incentive district, which for now on I will call an RHID, just because it's a mouthful um within the city and adopting a plan for the for the development of housing and public facilities in such of a proposed district. Establishing the date and time for a public hearing on such matter and providing a notice for the public hearing for the public. All related to Woodridge Estates RHID, which is the project whose final plat you just reviewed. So this is all related to the incentive application side of that project. So we received a incentive application for this project back in I, you know, I don't actually have the date of that, we received one from Legacy Homes of Ottawa, though, requesting an RHID um be established for the development of those thirteen for-sale, single-family homes, which will all live on what is currently the lot one oh oh one East Wilson Street. Um you first saw this incentive discussion brought to you in July, where you passed a resolution determining that there was a need for housing within the City of Ottawa and that this proposed district would fill some of that need. After that resolution was passed, we sent it to the state, which is normal procedure in this incentive process. And then we got a confirmation receipt, uh letter back from the Department of Commerce on dated August fourteenth that said that they approved that we were meeting um that this project would meet our need. So this project is eligible project under the RHID incentive tool. Has um as earlier when you were discussing economic development, um City Attorney Finch lists a bunch of incentive tools, this one is specifically related to housing. And so this project does fit into it under the RHID Act, Incentive Bill number seventeen, which allows reimbursement for eligible costs related to the extension of infrastructure, vertical construct, vertical construction um in limited circumstances or downtown secondary floor residential living. So the eligible costs have to be related to that, that would reimburse the developer through this tool. This project um is for thirteen for-sale, single-family homes. Um within the project, there are three unique floor plan options. They range in size for one thousand sixty-four square feet to one thousand four hundred square feet. And that is the living space, that does not include garages, if a garage is one of the plans. Um and the proposed market price for these units will be from two hundred and twelve thousand to two hundred and sixty-five thousand. Um this project does meet um housing needs that were outlined within the twenty-twenty-five housing study commissioned by Franklin County Development Council. Um there's actually within that price range, it says that in the next five years we'll need thirty-four homes. Little history, I'm really glad my dates align with um Ashley's, so we did our homework here. So this is how the planning process has gone through on this project. In August, the preliminary plat was approved by planning. In November, the final plat was uh approved for recommendation to send to you all from the planning and then you all reviewed the final plat this evening. This is for the public who may not live in an incentive world every day, but this is kind of how an incentive timeline works. So um we do have an economic incentive review committee that met in July to review this. Um that committee involves city staff, county staff, the USD, USD two ninety um school board, so those are the three taxing entities who are all impacted by these incentive tools. And all three um we met and everybody was in support of this. Um although Director Cobb stood, say you have to make sure kids live there because it's by the school, I don't know if you can make that happen, but. And then in July, you took the first action step, which I outlined earlier about the resolution establishing that we do have a housing need and that we have a project that came before us that would fill some of that need. Tonight, we're on action step number two, which is this resolution that communicates the intent to create a district, approves the development plan and sets a public hearing date. Um if that resolution were to get passed this evening, you would move on to action step number three and four and so on. But all of those items obviously are all dependent on the actions that are come, happened this evening. Oh, I went too far, sorry. Um I mentioned a development plan, so the plan just talks about what this project really is. So the property owner is Legacy Homes of Ottawa. Um obviously, development is happening at one zero zero one East Wilson Street. I've listed the current assessed valuation at, which is twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight dollars. That is important because when we talk about reimbursing the developer, which we will actually talk about the details of that at step, the next step, not tonight, but you need that assessed valuation as a baseline. The increment with the growth above that is what you use to generate the funds for this tool. Housings that will be built on it, thirteen homes, I listed the square footage again there, there'll also be public infrastructure improvements. And the statutory requirement feasibility study was completed by Baker Tilly, which is one of our municipal advisors. We do discuss the incentive with the developer during the process. We're not going to get into the nitty-gritty of that tonight, but we did want to let you know that the um the reimbursement comes from that increment that's realized from the development occurring on the lot. And then we have discussed a max amount of twenty years capped at twenty years or five hundred and seventy-six thousand plus construction loan interest with the developer. So as I said, tonight, those details of the actual agreement, the development agreement will come before you at the next meeting. But um the feasibility study um and confirmation of those costs related to public infrastructure support and recommend that um negotiated amount. And um we'll bring that to you in, on January seventh. The proposed resolution was prepared by Gilmore Bell, which is our bond counsel. And City Attorney Finch did review it as well and found it um to form, along with strategic alignment, so this hits strategic pillar for housing in neighborhoods. Specifically, the bullet point where we talk about quality housing for all. Um within that housing study, the price range that was listed, this falls into the two hundred thousand to two hundred and seventy-four ninety-nine, nine ninety-nine, which is actually the lowest price range of homes listed in the study. I'm not saying those are the lowest homes available in this community, but that was the smallest, like the lowest range, and so I just wanted to definitely reiterate that it fits into in to that specific area. Um and staff are recommending that you take action tonight to approve this resolution and set that public hearing date. Um or we can refer this to a following meeting for continued deliberation. Um and I am here to answer questions along with Director Landis and the developer is in the room as well.
Okay, do we have any questions?
Well, I for one, just want to thank Mr. Ogilvy for his investment in this, appreciate your patience and not only just for this project, but over the last fifteen, twenty years, homes you've built all over town, so we really appreciate your investment in our community, it's major. And so with that, Madam Mayor, I make a motion, we approve item eleven D on our agenda.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Um I just think on discussion, um just kind of as a general ask, I saw, um because in my spare time, I like to watch the planning commission meetings and I watched the meeting where this was talked about. Uh when there's a mail-in public comment for a planning commission, I saw it's distributed to the planning commission. Can we also get a copy of those public comments that go to the planning commission if they're emailed in?
Should be in a minute then.
It wasn't, it said in the minutes it was emailed out, it didn't have a copy of the letter. So, okay. Um just a copy of that as well and then again, yeah, thank you to Mr. Ogilvy for your work on this. Um I know there was a lot of contention in the meeting, especially regarding um kind of the bond, you know, that you had to put forward kind of for that, so Director Lanes, could you kind of talk about that a little? I know financially, what happens? We we hope this were never the case for any developer, anyone, someone starts a project with an RHID and then doesn't follow through.
So within our regulations, we ask for a financial security at the start of the project for the public infrastructure costs related to the projects. That's the part of the project that you would want to continue and finish, should that developer walk away in the middle um and leave that open-ended. Uh for each of the different items, we have, they they submit their bid that they have um obtained for their project, our city engineer reviews that bid, determines whether or not that's that's um a viable bid that we could um do the project for um should that occur. And then as part of that process, we offer three different ways to secure that, um one with uh just a a cash escrow, where they would place with us um in an account that the dollar amount, which is a hundred and twenty-five percent of the total cost. And that is used often when there might only be sidewalks left within a development or some smaller piece of infrastructure is sometimes that's used for that security. Uh you can also offer, we offer an irrevocable letter of credit in which they would work through their bank to provide that to us. And the third would be a corporate completion bond. Um it's very similar to a um bond that the developer would have with his own contractors, but in this case, the corporate completion bond is between them, the developer and the city, um also for a hundred and twenty-five percent of the cost. So those are the three options that we offer, we work through the the um cost of what that's going to be uh to the developer. Um in the case of the conversation we had at the planning commission meeting, uh there was some discussion about what the right amount would be for one piece of the public infrastructure. And at that time, we had uh let the planning commission know that we were still actually in negotiations and discussion about that. And we did even meet since then and we've come to to a, an agreement on how we would approach that. So um that often happens when right before we're ready to to file the final plat. In this case, our developer is really looking ahead at the success of his project and wanted to tackle those parts and pieces early on uh to make sure that um he knew what was coming at him financially for the project. And so um we've worked through most, but not all of the details yet, you're still waiting on some of those bids, but that's kind of how the the process works. Um that piece of it is separate and aside from this incentive side of it. So often you will hear of a development agreement on that side and then we have a development agreement on the incentive side, they really are two different things. Um so related to the final plat, the plating of the of the parcel is where that piece that you're asking.
Flat, not.
Yes.
RHID, okay.
Yeah, so that's where the public infrastructure occurs is with the build of the project. And so that's why it's related to the development piece that's related more to the final.
That makes sense. Thank you. On that, with that bond, so are we contractually obligated if he start or any developer were to start? They have that bond in place where we have funds to finish public infrastructure. Are we contractually obligated to finish that public infrastructure?
I would probably defer to City Attorney Finch on this item. If it weren't started, maybe we would determine that we weren't going to do it. If it was already in place and there were contracts and it's already started, we would probably want to pick up and finish that project. And then we would draw against those funds, whether it's in the form of an irrevocable letter of credit or whether it's the completion bond. We would, we would draw against those to complete and pay those contractors that were already finishing the job.
Thank you.
Or starting.
And we can get obviously further than that. Sorry that that was on the plat. I thought that was tied to the incentive here, but. You know, before we vote on that, I just again, like you're putting a lot, all developers are putting a lot of skin out there. Or if something were to happen, you know, with our economy, we saw it in two thousand eight. And we hope that never happens again, but so thank you for doing that as well.
And, and you're right. And I'm, I'm glad you brought up two thousand eight because we have a great example of what happens if we don't have one of those three options for a developer. The Coves was started and I'm sure that developer did not expect the crash of, of oh eight, and it did. And in the long run, it cost to, uh, uh, city taxpayers over a million dollars. It's not our responsibility to pay for the developer to develop what they planned on developing anyway. So they should be on the hook for, for that development. So I, I'm, I'm totally with you on any one of those options. And I'm glad there are three options because, you know, it, it, one doesn't necessarily work for, you, you know. All individuals, so.
Any further discussion? May I have roll call vote please? How do you vote Commissioner Kaler? Commissioner Crowley? Mayor Pro Tim Clayton? Commissioner Skidmore? And Mayor Allen?
And I vote yes. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you on the seventh.
We'll, we'll move on to comments by the city manager and he's not here. So we'll start with City Attorney Finch.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners again. Next week, as I alluded to earlier, we will have commission reorganization. We will have. The outgoing of Commissioner Kaler, the end of fourteen years of service to the city and. The admission of Commissioner-elect Tim Van Leeden, who will be seated with you. Part of the other process when we swear in new commissioners is the reorganization of the commission. We have traditionally done that on the same night that we have sworn in new commissioners. And with the changes that were made via charter ordinance, that means it's next week as well. So wanted to give you all an opportunity to talk about reorganization of the commission. The mayor and Mayor Pro Tim for essentially calendar year twenty-six and the, the very last few days of twenty-five. And if you have questions of us, happy to help with that, but really that's a commission prerogative and decision and. And wanted to give you a little bit of time on the agenda here today to talk about that before next week.
Madam Mayor, I, I would like to think that. Our Mayor Pro Tim would be moving up to mayor next year. Commissioner Clayton.
I know. I had the same thing with Commissioner Skidmore. I thank you for that. I would, you know, for sure. Put my name in that ring for that. I. Will say I've learned a lot from, from sitting in this chair and the other chairs we've sat in over the year from you. You've had quite a year. So to knock on wood, you know, next year goes perfectly smooth. There's no issues the entire year. So I just want to, you know, commend you, obviously before next week on that, but. You know, obviously Commissioner Kaler will be leaving. And I think, you know, both Commissioner Crowley and Commissioner Skidmore have served as mayor and Mayor Pro Tim multiple times and have a lot of great. Experience in that. And I don't believe, I don't know from them, if either of them have a reason where they would potentially next year be unable to step into a pro team role. I always try to be one if I'm in a, from the smartest person in a room, which I'm not, you know, I'm in the wrong room. So I would, you know, for sure, welcome both of your guys' expertise kind of as that.
Well, since we only have one, I would recommend Commissioner Crowley for the pro temp position. He's had a little bit of experience with being mayor a few times over. So I'm sure he will fulfill that role very due to play.
Okay. And so it's, am I hearing a motion from somebody?
We'll have to do the motions next week. This is just for you guys to have consensus on.
I was just trying to get out of the hot seat. I want a blank agenda.
No, everybody, she only has a week left.
Call her.
Okay. Was that all of, all of your comments? Okay. Thank heavens. Melanie, Director Landis.
Thank you. So I, uh, city manager Selkop prepared these slides, so I just thought I would run through a few of our activities. That have occurred and what he wanted to bring to your attention. So we did have the mayor's tree lighting ceremony on Saturday, November twenty-ninth. And it was cold and the snow was a perfect backdrop. So timing was great and appreciate everyone coming out for that. Looks very like a successful event. Staff assisted ECAN recently with unloading all of the toys that were donated during their toy drive. And we do this annually and we have a really dedicated group of city staff that gets together, unloads a big old box truck. Brings it in here and they sort all of those toys into age categories and gender categories. And then, um, and in this year, it was, there were seven hundred and sixty-one toys. So also a very successful toy drive for the holidays.
Going back a slide, sorry, there's not an age limit on the toys. I'm seeing it. It says by age and gender, but that doesn't look like a child.
I mean, they all need to be tested, but. Under our operational highlights, our public works department completed their winterization of the public restrooms and, and drinking fountains. And along with distributed door hangers for the southeast side of town, or I'm sorry, southwest side of town. In preparation for some of the tree trimming that will happen above the roads this winter. And our utility department completed the wire repair at eight twenty-eight South Olive, along with began removal of the veterans banners. And repaired multiple streetlights along sixty-eight highway within the city limits. Wanted to bring to your attention that our city hall HVAC project, which you approved a few weeks ago, is getting ready to kick off. And we will be bringing to you a, a full project. Plan, if you will. Part of this is going to require relocation of some of our staff for six weeks at a time. So we're proposing, we'll have two phases and we'll want to bring to you kind of a, a real detailed layout of where those people are going to be located. For those periods of time and so that the public has access to everyone they need to have access to. The, we are asking, we will, I guess, ask that you consider for a couple of those weeks during probably the late February or March timeframe. That we won't have access to the commission chambers or the study session room. And so we may want to consider either virtual meetings or another location.
So I'll bring it up again. When we had the, the. Reconstruction of this room, you know, I asked if we could do, you know, some, some meetings, you know, somewhere else and it didn't occur. So I think this would be another good time for us to do that.
It's a great time to do that.
I think if, if whoever it is that sets that up, please get started on that and get us another place or two to, to, to have those meetings.
Director Summers has done a great job of, of managing this project and he will be happy to provide some suggestions. I'm. I might have missed, well, here we go. I'm sorry. I, I skipped right over the current open positions. So we currently have two open positions, the property improvement partner in our neighborhood and community services department that closes tomorrow. And our maintenance worker position for the parks and cemetery department that closes on December eighteenth. And. We did bring on our new director of neighborhood and community services this week. Ryan Harkins is with us now. He's here for all of your questions and to serve the public full-time now, beginning this weekend. He comes to us with a master's of public administration and twenty-eight years of as a community planner in all of Kansas, Nebraska and Oklahoma. And we're really excited to have him on board. He's got a, a variety of notable experience that he's bringing to the position. And he has already hit the ground running and is, I'm sure, very excited about all the things to come.
Director Harkins, I've already had a few phone calls already about, you know, how the honeymoon is good so far. So we're, we're glad you're here. The honeymoon is good.
He's definitely had a chance to get involved, so. Our tentative items for our next meeting are the recognition of Commissioner Kaler's service, our swearing in of our new commissioner, Tim Van Leeden. Our city commission reorganization, which you just discussed, and then a more detailed plan for the HVAC project. And a change order request related to that project, as well as our consent agenda for the. OMA advisory board minutes and a bid award for our annual utility easement and right-of-way tree trimming. And with that, anyone of us are available for any questions you might have about activities or anything happening in the city right now.
You always got to be careful with that question because I, I get too many. I'll just direct it to you and we can kind of go from there. I noticed there's new Christmas decor going up on the poles that looks terrific. So just wanted a chance to plug that. Oh, I give plug. I tried to do a Commissioner Skidmore. I, I tried.
He'll get there.
Yes, that's, that's a great observation. I, I appreciate the, the conversation about the, the new decorations. We've had the same decorations for many, many years and, and they bring a sense of home to Ottawa. But. Back in. Yeah, we won't, we won't go to the age of them. We wanted to bring in a little different style this year and not necessarily make it about the Christmas holidays. But more winter. Almost like a winter wonderland type community to where. We think that these, these changes will, will, will bring us a little closer together and, and. Make it shine. You know, these are much brighter decorations and they are specific. There are three different versions of each snowflake and there could be more to come in the future.
Awesome. Do you, do we have a plan for how far that is it? Was it a full transition kind of from the old stuff? What is, does that kind of look like or in terms of those decorations going up kind of throughout town?
We had thirty dedicated Christmas trees, candles, candy canes. We now have thirty snowflakes. So all of those old decorations. Will be down and they are now replaced with those snowflakes. We would like to expand to maybe a different style of snowflake or, or some other decoration in the years to come, but. We're probably going to end up potentially doing like an auction for the old.
That was, that was my next question. Cause I know you're going to get that on if people, are they going to be on purple wave? Is there an option to kind of get them? What does that look?
That would be my guess is where, what route we would go was put them on purple wave and do the auction site like that.
We're not losing all the nostalgia. We're keeping the two Merry Christmas things as you enter into town, correct?
Correct. We are. And we may have to do some. Relighting of those. They're, they're getting really hard to see. We change the bulbs on them every single year and it just is really hard to read at night. They're beautiful during the day. When you come into town, but at night you're like, what in the world does that say? So we may end up doing some type of LED rope light around it to, to make it. But yes, those, those banners should remain.
Awesome. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to comments by the governing body. We'll start with Commissioner Skidmore.
Oh yeah, I noticed our, our kiosk is gone. I brought my ten pound sledgehammer down here this week and it was already gone, so. I missed. All right. Anyway, I'm glad to see it gone. I'm glad we're making progress in that.
You can buy it on purple wave.
Oh, I, I can buy it? Destroy it in my backyard. Okay. All right. That's all I had. Thank you for the work on it then.
Commissioner Crowley?
Uh, I want to thank the veterans committee. Not only do they do the flags that the utility guys put out on all the poles, but. They, they actually treated the utility guys to lunch the other day for doing it for them. So it was nice to hear the appreciation that they show for those, those folks being out there, putting those up for them. And I also want to say thank you to my fellow commissioners. Very few and far between. Do we ever have discussion like we've had tonight? And it was good. I've been told too many times that I think we all use one brain because we all vote the same way. And I think we've proved that's not correct. We had good discussion. There was no animosity. There was no anger. And we came to a decision that I think all of us can live with. So thank you all.
Commissioner Kaler?
Last time I get to say it, not at this time, nothing.
Mayor Pro Tim Clayton?
Oh, sorry. I was about to jump the gun. I knew where you were going. I do, I want to welcome Director Harkin. You've been here three days, so I'm sure you have everything figured out and you're ready to just roll. So. We're happy to have you here and excited for the future with you. As well, I want to plug the remote meetings. I think there's a lot of great places around town. Obviously, we have some constraints with having to, you know, with live streaming, what that may look like. But I think that would be an awesome opportunity to get out kind of among the folks. I already hit on the Christmas decor and then I wanted to hit on the dancers. Anyone who went down to the mayor's tree lighting and then the parade after. It was cold. And every year they do the Nutcracker. I may be wrong. And it's, it's always great, but some years it's in the upper twenties to thirties. Some years it feels like it's ten degrees. And just kind of watching them shiver, but still kind of power through was really cool to see. So thank you to all of them and their parents for, for braving the cold to be out there. And then for the cold, there was a great turnout. At the parade. So I just want to thank everyone involved with that. And then just welcome the holiday season to Ottawa with our decor and all that stuff going up too.
And I can't say it any better, so I have no comment. We'll move on to announcements. We have December tenth, twenty twenty-five city commission meeting at seven PM here at city hall. December seventeenth, twenty twenty-five city commission meeting at ten AM at city hall. And it looks like we are needing to have an executive session. Do we have someone to make that motion?
Madam Mayor, I move the commission recess into executive session to engage in privilege and confidential communication with the board's attorney. Pursuant to the attorney client privilege exception, KSA seventy-five four-three, one-nine B two. The open meeting will resume. Here at nine oh five. Four minutes enough? Okay, nine oh five.
Give us a couple of minutes.
Uh, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? We'll go into exec. Okay, do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we will return to our meeting and seeing no other business before us, I will adjourn.